The time is 6:00 PM. The council of the City of Dennison now convenes into regular session. Tonight's demolition will be given by Mr. Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I bow our heads and pray. To the Father, we ask for your blessings on this meeting tonight. Now give your wisdom and insight to our elected officials as they struggle with the decisions for our community. Lead, guide, and direct us in all things that we may help build the city of God here on earth. We ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to item three on our agenda. And council's in the seat of the consent agenda. Any discussions or anything to be pulled?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move for approval of the consent agenda as written.
Second. I have a motion from Ms. Gott and a second from Mr. Crowley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. And motion carries. And we are now going to go into four A, which is a public hearing. Receive report, hold discussion, conduct public hearing to receive testimony from the building official on unsafe conditions of posted structure. Ms. Floyd.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Council. We're here tonight to discuss the demolition of six structures. And we will start with sixteen A and Lee MacArthur. On December nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, the owner of the property, Rebecca A. Walton, and Real Team Mortgage Corp., was given notice of violation to repair, rehabilitate, or demolish the structure at sixteen A and Lee MacArthur. The structure is unsafe, is a potential fire hazard, and is dangerous to human life, and its continued use will constitute a hazard to safety, health, and public welfare. This house is an attractive nuisance. It's open. It's not weather-tied. The front porch, as you can see, the bangles have torn it out. The front porch, the cover on it is near collapse. Interested persons have failed, neglected, or refused to comply with the initial notice of violation. A record of the violations, notice, and evidence of the dangerous and unsafe conditions has been documented and is on file in the Building and Code Enforcement Department. I'm asking the council to declare the structure a dangerous structure and order its removal within ten days after notice of council decision. And our next property, eleven nineteen West Johnson. On January second, two thousand fifteen, the owner of the property, Lucille Edwards, was given notice of violation to repair, rehabilitate, or demolish the structure at eleven nineteen West Johnson. The structure is unsafe, is a potential fire hazard, and is dangerous to human life, and its continued use will constitute a hazard to safety, health, and public welfare. This house has foundation problems. The roof is in very poor condition, as you can tell. It's been neglected for quite a while. Interested persons have failed, neglected, or refused to comply with the initial notice of violation. A record of the violations, notice, and evidence of the dangerous and unsafe conditions has been documented and is on file in the Building and Code Enforcement Department. I'm asking the council to declare the structure a dangerous structure and order its removal within ten days after notice of council's decision. The next one is four twelve East Scandy. I do believe there was a typo on the agenda itself. It had four twelve west. But all notices were sent regarding four twelve East Scandy. On January second, two thousand fifteen, the owners of the property, Neil Manners, Laura Manners, and Glenn Loughlin, was given notice of violation to repair, rehabilitate, or demolish the structure at four twelve East Scandy. The structure is unsafe, is a potential fire hazard, and is dangerous to human life, and its continued use will constitute a hazard to safety, health, and public welfare. This structure, this was a fire structure. And actually, the Manners, Neil Mann and Laura Manners, I received the side release from them today for this property, that Glenn Loughlin is lean-holder, and he has failed or neglected or refused to comply with the initial notice of violation. A record of the violation, notice, and evidence of dangerous and unsafe conditions has been documented and is on file in the Building and Code Enforcement Department. I'm asking the council to declare the structure a dangerous structure and order its removal within ten days after notice of council's decision. The next property is eight oh four West Walker. On January second, two thousand fifteen, the owner of the property, Don Stewart and Percy Stewart, Jr., was given notice of violation to repair, rehabilitate, or demolish the structure at eight oh four West Walker. The structure is unsafe, is a potential fire hazard, and is dangerous to human life, and its continued use will constitute a hazard to safety, health, and public welfare. The problems with this house, they have some foundation problems. And this rear portion of the house, the roof is bad, the foundation is bad. The owners of the property did take out a permit to demolish this rear section of the property, which they did. So they have taken the rear portion of it off. A record of the violations, notice, and evidence of the dangerous and unsafe conditions has been documented and is on file in the Building and Code Enforcement Department. I'm asking the council to declare the structure a dangerous structure and order its removal within ten days after notice of council's decision. This has all been removed.
Betty, can I ask a clarifying question on that? When you say it's been removed, if you go back one slide, you can see where the roof line, the east line is, and then there's almost like a wall break?
Yes.
That goes straight down. So they had like a sun porch, a sunboard at the time that was removed?
It must have been, because the wall is still there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
On January second, two thousand fifteen, the owner of the property, Dorothy Fraser, was given notice of violation to repair, rehabilitate, or demolish the structure at five twenty-one West Walker. The structure is unsafe, is a potential fire hazard, and is dangerous to human life, and its continued use will constitute a hazard to safety, health, and public welfare. This structure has a failing foundation. The front porch area looks like it could collapse. The roof is in very poor condition. Interested persons have failed, neglected, or refused to comply with the initial notice of violation. A record of the violations, notice, and evidence of the dangerous and unsafe conditions have been documented and is on file in the Building and Code Enforcement Department. I'm asking the council to declare this structure a dangerous structure and order its removal within ten days after notice of council's decision. One fourteen West Hall. On December twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, the owner of the property, Johnny Weatherford and Angelique Weatherford, was given notice of violation to repair, rehabilitate, or demolish the structure at one fourteen West Hall. This structure is unsafe, is a potential fire hazard, and is dangerous to human life, and its continued use will constitute a hazard to safety, health, and public welfare. This is an attractive nuisance. It's open. The roof is in poor condition. It's not weather-tied. Has foundation problems. Interested persons have failed, neglected, or refused to comply with the initial notice of violation. A record of the violations, notice, and evidence of the dangerous and unsafe conditions has been documented and is on file in the Building and Code Enforcement Department. I'm asking the council to declare the structure a dangerous structure and order its removal within ten days after notice of council's decision.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the work record. And I do have, first off, I have Don Stewart for eight oh four West Walker. Just come up. State your name and address for the record, please. Let me get a copy of the document.
My name is Don Stewart. I currently reside at eight two sixteen North Bay Highway, nine one apartment four twenty-seven. And I'm here for the address of eight oh four West Walker Street in Dennison and Tinsel. I realize the pictures you saw were really, they looked bad. I'm just gonna tell you, they did. But the major part of the reason we got the notice was the back end that you saw where the, that is an entrance hall, which can be completely torn out and removed, and that is the plan, and to replace the porch, the posts on the porch. There were some, two or three windows that needed to be replaced as well. Some boards had come off on the front at the bottom. Those were planned to be replaced as well. And I went ahead and started, I have removed all of the back half of that because it went into a back porch, and all that was an add-on structure to the house. It wasn't originally part of the house adding on it. So I got a permit and had that removed to show in good shape that I really intend to try to rehab this house and get back to it. I haven't been able to because of financial reasons. But I found somebody that's willing to work with me and help it get done so that maybe I can return home, trying to get a safe place for me and my daughter and my grandkids to go. And so we quit bouncing around, and we just kind of let them bounce from place to place in the last couple of years. And I'm just trying to keep it so we'll have a stable home for the grandkids. And I've actually started to show that I really intend to rehab. The house itself is in good shape, but those two rooms had flat roofs, and they sat and they leaked, and they leaked, and they leaked, and that was the result of the flat roofs. There was a couple of windows on the opposite side, one that definitely needed to be replaced. It was boarded up. But it was boarded up when I lived in there because of my teenage son. So that's all I have to say. I just wish the council would work with me and give me some time to get it done.
What's your timeline?
I'm trying to get it done within the next Monday. Everything that he showed me that needed to be taken care of is what I'm taking care of first, which would be the front porch, the porch where the entrance hall is, where it's leaning, because I plan to completely remove that. So that's a structural thing because of the concrete and the crack in the concrete. But I have to say, itself is generally sound. I had started having it leveled before I actually moved it out, and that is why I had to move it out. I kind of got screwed up on that deal and screwed around, and I didn't have the money to finish it. We had a new baby in Christ and Walton baby, which was safe for her to be in at that time. And that's why I left.
Would you mind, you did say that you maybe came up with another alternative for financing or help with this. Would you mind elaborating a little bit on that?
I have a young man that is a contractor that is working with me, and what he does, everything that needed to be done, that needed to be done, as we go into it, he will give me an estimate and tell me what I need to do. And then he gives me a piece of paper and tells me how much more material it's gonna cost. And then he does the work, and I pay him for it.
Let me ask this another way. Is it realistic under your current financial situation that you can complete this in an eight-day timeline?
Everything that they've told me that I need to repair is.
In what ballpark do you have an estimate on what you think it's gonna take to get this in shape?
It's probably gonna take another two or three thousand, but that's it.
And that'll get it in living condition?
That will, yes.
And that'll bring it up to code?
That will get me in the door.
What's required to get it? Is anybody here that can address the building? I was lost there for a second.
I'm now.
You mentioned, I think, some foundations. Can you maybe reiterate what was the condition that caused us to be on this?
Well, she did remove the worst part of it, but the front of the house really is leaning in.
That's the entrance hall area, and that can be torn off because it's just like a little opening you step into before you go into the house. And that could be completely removed.
There was foundation issues, I believe, that were, I wrote down earlier, foundation and roof. Was roof part of this?
Of that back roof, that one right there, that was part of it. The roof on the house, I mean, it is going to be, needs to be replaced pretty soon, but it's in a lot better shape than what she removed. Where she did remove the add-on to the house, now there's, you still have some work to do there.
Yes, yes, yes. You know, that's how the web that we have to, because we have to go back and pick it forward to fix the, where he wrecked it.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Ms. Floyd?
Typically in the past, our council's position has been, we don't want to, you know, have to tear down structures if somebody's looking to rehab. In the past, what we've done, we've allowed during two weeks to pull a permit and six months to complete the work. That work has been to put the house back into compliance. And so this could be, you know, the foundation, be put it back in the, the front facade, if there's issue with the back facade and all that. So if you think you're willing to take that on, we can serve to entertain a motion if one of the council members want to have that as part of this to let you be able to do that, that we can maybe have it restated by the city attorney, how our current policy presumably works on that, if you want to understand that. But the main thing we don't want you to do is start to spend a lot of money, put a lot of time and energy into it, and not get there in time, and then it's still, we still wind up having it on the list, and you start having some issues with that. So we want to make sure you're fully aware of what you're, you're telling. You want to repeat that again, what, how we, generally how our procedure is, that these two weeks to pull the permit, six months to complete the work?
That's correct.
And then it's up to staff as far as the level of completion, and you need to talk to them about that. We keep it on, we've been, we've been still going ahead and approving it on the demolition list and leaving it on there.
That's correct.
We just kind of stayed on the staff's part of it before.
That's correct.
Yes, you go ahead and make the determination that it's a dangerous structure, but you stay the demolition of the structure until, for the six-month period?
If they pull a building permit in ten days?
Yes.
If they don't, then it's still on the process for demolition. Ms. Floyd? From an electrical standpoint or water standpoint, utilities, will the house meet code there?
Well, the house wouldn't meet current code because it wasn't, it hasn't been rewired. It's been.
Has it been, is it disconnected currently?
It's disconnected.
So does that mean it'll have to be brought up to code before we can?
No.
It does not have to? Okay.
It'd only have to be brought up to code if she starts rewiring it. But no, it does not.
Mr. Stewart, I would highly encourage you to get with someone and find out the true cost of what you're trying to do, and make sure that you're not pouring money down the well.
It is.
I respect what you're trying to do and keep your home, but your money's maybe better spent elsewhere. So just, I'd look into that very thoroughly.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to any agenda items? If being done, this public hearing is closed. Any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Come on. Just call to the mic and speak your name and your address, so that way it goes on the record.
I'm Andrew Martin. I reside at four twenty West Bond Street. And I have placed a being on property. I may take this property for like the last, I'm gonna say, longest I've been in the house in about fifteen, I'll get the house paid for.
Is this on agenda?
This is on five A.
Try again.
It's agenda five A.
Okay.
So we're just not to your?
We're not to your?
Okay.
Deal yet? That's all right? Okay. Sorry about that. We're just on demo, so.
No problem.
All right. So nobody else want to speak? We'll close this public hearing. Any other discussions or motions by council?
I'll make a motion that we did for demolition of all homes excluding eight oh four West Walker.
No. You said that?
If you just moved to demo all homes, staff has direction that if she pulls a permit in the first ten days, and then, well, that permit will be active for six months until she completes the work. At the end of that six-month period, then we'll demo the house if it's not complete or in compliance at that time. Okay. And does that also apply to all six homes if somebody comes in and pulls a permit on? Theoretically, yes, sir. Okay. I'll make a motion to continue, move forward with the demolition of all six homes as stated.
A second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Raleigh and a second by Councilmember Gott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Now we're on to five A.
Actually, Mayor Protem, five A is not his issue. His issue was covered in the consent agenda under item B.
It passed before then.
Yes.
It's already passed.
It's already passed. Council has the ability to reconsider that if they wanted to, but it's up to y'all. I think we, the lot was awarded to the highest bidder in that particular instance.
You good?
I need to hear, I didn't hear, I want to hear.
Come back to the front. Mr. Hannah, can you re-explain that in a gentleman's language?
I sure can. So this is a.
We're on three, just so basically, we're on three B on the agenda.
So this was for four twenty-four West Bond, and the property at four twenty-four West Bond is declared surface property since November sixteenth, two thousand fourteen. It went to bid. Bids were open at ten a.m. on February seventeenth. The highest bid was from Sharon Cleveland for twelve hundred dollars, and the property's currently praised at one thousand six hundred fifty dollars. And staff recommended that they award the bid to authorize the execution of a special warranty deed for Mrs. Sharon Cleveland for four hundred dollars for that, for that lot. So as it stands now, the lot goes to Mrs. Sharon Cleveland for twelve hundred dollars. There you go.
One hand means enough.
Thank you. We'll move on then.
Thank you very much. So what, how do I go about purchasing?
We'll contact you tomorrow. We'll explain all the things we got to do. We'll have a contract more than likely, and you know, set the title.
Do I pay cash or?
We'll do it at the closing, at title customer more than likely. But we can, what we'll do is visit with you tomorrow, put all those deals in my business cards, and just call my office, and we'll get y'all set up.
So do I need to stay right now? Do I need?
Nope.
All right. Moving on to five A, agenda five A, enter into agreements and execute special warranty deeds in accordance with the city's affordable housing program requirements, and I have to thank Mr. Hannah for that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. That is correct. As you know, we've been working many years to kind of generate an affordable housing program that provides a number of different incentives to try to get some redevelopment in our parts of town that have either dilapidated housing or insufficient housing to meet the demand, and to do so in an affordable manner. We've already entered an agreement for seven lots, and tonight we have another bid that was, that was given to us by Briscoe and Holliday Investments for nine eleven West Bond Street. Mr. Briscoe, Mr. Holliday are proposing to build one home that does meet our program requirements. In your backup, this shows the elevation of the floor plan. If we can scroll through that, get the pointer. In your backup, if you scroll to the tail end of your backup, you will see the floor plan and the elevations for this proposed house. It is a three-two, and the elevation would be comparable to other homes within the neighborhood, which is one of the things we've asked them to do. If you draw through certain parts of town, you'll see all brick houses with aluminum windows right next to wood frame homes, and it just looks weird. And with the current construction standards that are out to the day, it was cementous siding. It has the same fire rating as brickwood. It's essentially, it's a masonry, we consider it a masonry product. It is a masonry product, and you can make a house that is just as fire retardant as a brick home would be, this particular product. And that's what they've chosen to do, is use a cementous siding product. So if council is comfortable with the proposal, we'd ask that you would operate the city manager and be entered into an agreement in accordance with our affordable housing program.
I'll move for approval.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Gott and a second by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. We are now down to five B, lease agreement with the Dennison Independent School District baseball field, Sunny Mackey.
Good evening. Excuse me. We are here tonight to consider entering into a lease agreement with the Dennison Independent School District for the usage of the baseball field located at nineteen oh one South Myrick, the old high school field. There's no fee for this, but the city would maintain the field located there. We did go to a meeting with, we met with the local baseball associations and determined with the needs of their league, the little league field association would need that field. So Pony, or the Old Pony, would stay out of North to North, and this new division would play at that field on Myrick.
Any questions?
We have a ballpark, what's it gonna cost to maintain a field annually per season?
Approximately with the, just the maintenance items, which would be the field dry and the chalk, and this make, little miscellaneous type things would be around three thousand dollars. We will need additional help with just maintaining that, being an extra field. They'll play two days, two game days and two practice days.
If I can amend that just a little bit, we talked to our groundskeeper and folks about the manpower needed to do that during the season. They suggested that we have two more people, two more part-time employees during March through September. Is that right?
May through September.
May through September. And I know them, and they're not gonna ask for the real amount of people they need, so I'd like to give them three part-time employees, and that is about eighteen thousand dollars total. That can come out of our operating budget, again, through the fuel savings that we've identified already for this year, and some additional sales tax revenue we received this year that was, it's over a bubble of projected revenues. So I think from a, even within the current budget, it can be budget neutral, but I would need council's authorization to hire fewer part-time employees because they're not in our scheduled employees.
So the way this program is gonna, is gonna work, it's not gonna be exactly like we have it at the other ball fields where the different leagues maintain the fields. This one, we would maintain the fields. Is that how we operate the girls softball facility? We maintain the, so it'd be that same kind of crew doing that?
Yes, sir. And that's a contract requirement under the agreement, is that the city and Dennison employees maintain the field. So there won't be any differential cost between that and any other bid for the city? That's right.
We're not maintaining it to a higher standard, no.
It's the same standard as we currently tend to.
At this time, we're not designating on this. Our staff's direction is as far as the use of the facility. Who's using it in the league, in the different leagues?
We are not. But as Sunny said, well, our intention is to allow Little League to use the field. If there is any concern about that, that's the direction we're heading, so we ought to talk about it now. If there is a concern on council's part about that, I will also say that one of the things we hope to accomplish over the next twelve-month period, because if we don't, we're, right now we have two programs that are competing in the same age group. And in my opinion, I'll have the kids in the program, in my opinion, ten thousand-foot view, Dennison isn't big enough to have two programs competing for the same kids. And I think it, I think frankly, it makes both programs less than what one program could be.
could be. But both programs have a rich history in this community, and I don't think it's really my job or the city's job to dictate who wins and who loses. What we're hoping we can do is over the next 12 months, we can identify four scheduled meeting times to come together with both groups, Denison Youth Sports Association and Denison Little League, to be able to discuss how we, how we move forward as a community with boys baseball. That's our hope.
I believe we, we previously talked about the field, and at one time we put a dart and said this Pony League would have this field for that age group, which is 14 U. And I think since then, this school, as far as my understanding is, they, the baselines and the mound, they want to maintain that for their, they can still be able to come in and use this facility. So thus, they don't want us moving that around, and that's, the 14 U group wouldn't be able currently facilitate the use of that. So in case, I think we talked about it in retreat, maybe a one-time out on this subject. So, but tonight, we're just talking on this one part of it for the lease agreement. Any other discussion? Anything to motion?
I'll send it through.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brawley, and a second by Councilmember Gott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Black sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Time is 6:31 P.M. The council will now go into closed executive section pursuant to chapter 551 of Texas Government Code. 6E, discussion, or excuse me, discuss the appointment, employment, evaluate your assignment, duties, discipline, dismissal of or adhered compliance against a public officer or employee section 551.074. 6F, discuss the commercial or financial information received from existing business or business prospects with which the city is negotiating, negotiating for the location or retention of a facility, or for incentives that the city is willing to extend, or financial information submitted by the same, section 551.087. That is the appointments. The 6E will be our appointment set.